Good evening. Welcome to your city council meeting, our special council meeting. Could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Bob Lingle.
Here.
Councilmember Ashley Costa.
Present.
Councilmember Cecilia Martner.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Dirk Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor John Lynn.
Here. Because this was a special meeting, we don't have an invocation on for tonight. Okay, I'm not very prepared, but we're going to go with it. Dear God, we come to you today to do the city's business and improve our community. We ask your help in bringing all the good ideas in this room together. We also ask your help in all of our sweethearts who aren't here with us this evening, and may they forgive us. We appreciate you being with us at all times. Thank you for your guidance, for your love, and for your kindness. Amen. If you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we start out tonight, I need to share two things with my fellow council members and with the community. There was a little error in a picture in the Long Poak Record today that showed me in front of a building on N Street, and it said I owned the building. I don't. The idea behind that was to show a building that had lost its use and had been vacant for many years. But it's an imperfect world, and things don't always turn out quite the way you want them. There have also been questions, and I tried to address it in the paper, but I missed one key point about a parcel of land my wife owns, which is, has a zoning issue. It was originally designated open space in the 1997 general plan because the city intended to buy it and then ultimately didn't. But on the zoning map, which obviously everybody looked at, it was 7R1 when it was purchased. This error has actually already been corrected by the Planning Commission, and it's in the document that I've kind of asked everybody to hold off on while we corrected these other things. So basically, my wife's parcel continues to be in limbo while we work on this. And those are my disclosures. Does anyone else have anything they need to talk about with regard to this? Okay, so we'll have a city council discussion and direction regarding the scheduled topics, format of the council's review process of the general plan update, Phase One. Joe, you're first, I think.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. What we have before us this evening is staff has taken the direction that was given to the staff at the January 31st meeting, and we have attempted to come back to you with our understanding and a few questions that we had that we'd just like to have clarified. And those questions have to do basically with public notice and staff reports, the deadlines that are in the council handbook, the housing element, the general plan, how we would address those issues, zoning ordinance amendments, and what we have is a potential timeline that is at the rear of the staff report. However, we have looked at that timeline, and I believe in front of you this evening, you do have a timeline where we are hopeful of meeting the council direction to attempt these changes to the adoption of the general plan and the zoning ordinance changes by October, by November. And our new timeline hopefully can address that. So we have presented it to you this evening, and what we're hoping for is some discussion and some direction from you so that we can proceed and get to work on this project. So I'm available for any questions. And we would appreciate in the course of the discussion if the council could provide us directions on the specific questions that we have asked in our zoning or in our staff report.
Yes, we will. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Just because this is fairly complex, and we've all spent a lot of time talking about it, I've spent time with the staff several times trying to sort out how we would go through this in the most expeditious way. Today, we met again after talking about some more choices. And so what I'm going to pass out to you now, I've already given to the staff about 10 minutes ago, I apologize for that, but I'm a slow typist. I also apologize for any typos that are in here. There's one on the very first. And this is kind of an explanation, and I'll read it for the public, but I brought 50 copies. I don't know if it's going to make it. Ray, can you be the copy passer outer since you're on the end? Huh? Okay, thank you, Alan. And this is a little different from what I presented before, and the idea behind it is to try to get everything in the time schedule so that we're done by October, which is when this council is still seated. And so let me get a second to get a few more out there, and then we'll talk about it. And what I'm passing out to you now doesn't have dates on it. That's really something the staff has to fill in because one of the things that there are noticing requirements, and one of the questions they asked is whether we wanted to do less than our standard noticing, and that's a decision the council will need to talk about. But they feel they can get this done within the time period. So the first idea behind this is to take some of the items that do not require council work and to give those to the Planning Commission immediately so they can begin working on those while we're working on the first portion with the council. And so it kind of goes like this. These three items are for Planning Commission review and amendment prior to the first item, the commercial zoning consolidation reaching the Planning Commission. The items will come back to the council for final approval with the general plan and zoning ordinance section. So these are items that we wouldn't hear first. And there as follows. The review of the architectural review guidelines for relevancy to current community norms. The review of the parking ordinance to measure the results of the changes to the industrial zone parking ratios. Second, a consideration of allowing tandem parking in multifamily housing zones to increase off-street parking. And third, a review of the parking requirements for large medical clinics for adequacy. And obviously, whatever council members wanted to add to these. And finally, review and approval of the draft sign ordinance previously referred by the council. And then our sequence of work has been changed just a little bit based on some discussions that I had with staff in terms of the environmental review document amendment. There are two of the items that we're going to talk about that will affect that document primarily, and so those were moved into first and second place. The first one is a discussion this evening of commercial zoning consolidation and general plan land use descriptor, the verbiage in the general plan that talks about the commercial zones. The second item to be considered in the sequence of meetings would be the residential zoning review, general plan residential land use descriptor, and the review of the 250 proposed residential property downzonings. And then the next one would be the industrial zoning review and the general plan industrial land use descriptor. These were switched in place because the change to the industrial are not things that would affect our general plan, or I'm sorry, our environmental document, and the first two are. Number four would be reconsideration of the prior council's downzoning of commercial and industrial properties to residential, about 75 parcels. Item five would be a review of the east and north side potential annexations. Item six would be a review of the west and south side potential annexations. Item seven would be the review of the should and shall recommendations from the Planning Commission and the other Planning Commission general plan recommendations that are prepared. And finally, the last step would be approval of the Phase One elements. And then for 2013, after the budget, there would be a six-month review of the changes completed in 2012 to determine if any errors or omissions occurred that require a general plan or zoning ordinance amendment. So if we made a mistake, we'll get after it right away. Then the second item would be a Phase Two overview and scheduled joint meeting with the Planning Commission for Phase Two work. Again, this is all after the budget, so it would be after May, probably. And then a review of each Phase Two element by the council to provide in-depth instructions to the Planning Commission. And the next is the meeting methodology, and this is kind of the steps that each of these topics would go through. So the meeting methodology would be, number one, draft documents distributed by the mayor or staff at the meeting prior to the meeting at which the zone or element will be discussed. So I, for instance, I've distributed the documents that we're going to be talking about this evening with regard to the commercial zone. Then we would have the first noticed meeting on the zone or element, council discussion to provide staff with directions in preparing draft documents for council review and approval, and I titled that the 80% Document. Then the second notice meeting for the council on the zoning element, a council discussion of the document provided by staff and any amendments or additions prior to forward it to the Planning Commission. The next one would be Planning Commission review of the draft document from the council and the amendment of the document by the Planning Commission based on the commission's experience in past actions. Then if necessary, there would be a second Planning Commission meeting if the amendments made by the Planning Commission required a second review before Planning Commission approval. And then the last step would be the accumulation of all the documents passed by the Planning Commission for enactment by the council in October of 2012 for the first and second reading. So rather than what I had originally talked about was bringing it back a piece at a time, this would accumulate them all at once, and they would come back to us as a single document. Now, Lucille, is there anything else you'd like to change in this? Because you didn't get much time to look at it. We had meetings this afternoon where we were brainstorming on how to make this easier, and then I went and committed it to the computer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe it does cover what we discussed this afternoon.
Okay. All right. Councilmembers, would you like to discuss this for a minute first, or would you like to go to oral communication first? Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marylyn. I actually have a few questions. The first is for staff. Ms. Breeze, I had a quick question for you. So it looks like in the way that it's presented in the staff report this evening and the way Mayor Lynn proposed it in this document he just passed out are actually a little bit different because sequence of work, for example, number one, you have both the commercial zoning consolidation and general plan commercial land use descriptor included as one event.
Correct.
But it's showing on the staff report that those two items cannot be undertaken concurrently.
Yes, Councilmember Costa, the way that it would proceed would be for the material would be presented by Mayor Lynn or the council would include both the recommendations of the, for the zoning ordinance and for the general plan language. That would be looked at by council. And we would then take the zoning ordinance information to the Planning Commission, who would then review it. The actual work on that would be done following the determination by the Planning Commission until the actual direction was provided. We would not be able to start work on the general plan information, but we would, following the determination by the Planning Commission, then obtain a scope of work from our general plan consultant, who would then begin work on what was needed to update the plan.
Okay. And Marylyn, is it your understanding that then we would start with the next sequence, number two, while the general planned element was being worked on by the consultant?
Actually, my goal is to give the consultant kind of a draft idea of what we want for language, and I would quote California Public Law Section 65862. "It is the intent of the legislature in enacting this section that local agencies shall, to the extent possible, concurrently process applications for general plan amendments and zoning changes which are needed to permit development." So the legislature has kind of said, yeah, you can work on these things at the same time. And my goal is not to tell the general plan consultant in an absolute sense, this is the end document, but if we don't have an idea of what the general plan is going to say, then you're not going to be able to create a good zoning ordinance that's consistent.
Understanding that each time we complete a sequence of work, commercial, residential, industrial, we would then have to re-contact the consultant, are we assuming that he's going to be working through this entire process, and are we willing to pay for that?
Actually, the goal is that, I think, after our last conversation, that he would probably start in on this when the commercial and residential are completed because those are the ones that are going to have a lot of effect. The two that follow, or the things that follow are really more zoning ordinance and then council decisions on whether to review the prior changes to those commercial and industrial parcels. And then the issues with regard to potential annexations have already been heard by the Planning Commission. Those are just coming to us for a final decision. So the first two items are the ones where there would be, or the first, perhaps the first three, but the first two are where there would be some question about what the descriptor in the general plan says with regard to commercial and to residential. And probably not even residential. I mean, I don't see a change there. The commercial is probably the only one that's going to have a big hit.
Okay. Thank you. And staff, one last question. I noticed in the staff report for the meeting listed as council meeting February 14th, it shows that this was not noticed as a public hearing. Can you please explain?
That is correct. We did not notice it as a public hearing. It was simply a discussion, as noted, on the agenda, and we are able to receive direction, general direction from the council. There's no decisions being made.
Thank you.
Councilmember Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions regarding the public hearing as well. I understand that legally we don't have to, but it's really more of a policy whether this council wants to have public hearings or not. So that's something that I hope it comes up later on in the discussion tonight as a general guideline for this whole process. Do we want meetings to be noticed as public hearings, or do we not? So I leave that question open for the council.
Could, how about if we resolve that right now?
I have the floor for the moment.
Okay, sorry.
The next question is for Ms. Breeze. Regarding the cost of the consultant, you do have some numbers in your report. Could you, given the information that we're receiving here where we would have this consultant basically through the process of the commercial zoning and the residential zoning, amending the general plan language and the zoning ordinances, can you elaborate a little bit on your estimate as to what the cost will be?
Certainly, Councilmember Martner. The cost for the additional work by the general plan consultant, until we have an idea of the scope of work that we're going to ask him to perform, which will follow the direction that we receive from the council and then the determination that is made at the Planning Commission level, it's difficult for us to get a scope. As soon as we do have that information, he will give us the scope of work, and we will bring that to the council as far as what timeline and the costs and the impacts on either the EIR, if there's necessity for that to be reopened and worked as well. Until we get him some information, he's really unable to give us any firm numbers. The EIR consultant is the one who is working with us on the general plan. There are additionally numbers in here. I did contact a separate consultant who does work on zoning ordinances just to get a timeline if we did a, if we went in another direction and did a comprehensive update of the zoning ordinance, then what would the cost and the approximate timeline? And that number is in here. It's approximately $70,000 to $150,000, depending on the number of meetings that would be expected. And it's 18 to 24 months, and that's for a comprehensive update.
That's 18 to 24 months to prepare?
From the initial hearings that would occur, and traditionally, what you do is a public workshop and joint meeting with council and the Planning Commission to get direction. Then you do public workshops on the individual components and take those through the Planning Commission and then on to the city council.
So I'm a little confused because the timeline, the revised timeline goes to October. That's less than 18 to, 18 to 24 months. So what's...
Because we're not doing a comprehensive update of the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
What we are doing is just individual components as identified by the council.
Okay. So in this timeline over here, we're going to work at these little pieces, this revised timeline that is going to take all the way until October. We're going to work in these little pieces on the general plan and individually on the zoning maps or commercial zoning ordinances and so forth, correct?
Correct.
After that, after, the consultant is going to take all of this and put it all together, and that's going to take 18 to 24 months?
No, we will not. That 18 to 24 months was just an informational item. That is not something that is before the council. We're not doing a comprehensive update. We're doing the update to the zoning ordinance in another manner, in the path that we were directed by the council.
If I may, through the chair, to elaborate on what Ms. Breeze is saying, because we aren't sure yet what the needs are for review by the consultant, we thought it'd be good to get a maximum sort of idea of timeline and cost, so we focused on a total update of the zoning code because we thought this is a subset of that, so it's likely not going to, although you never know, but it's likely not going to cost more than those numbers. And the timeframe that you have before each night, we can meet to do what's being suggested in terms of this piecemeal, I don't want to use the judgmental words, this inner step approach.
Okay, I'd like to come back to Councilmember Martner's question because I think that's one of the very first things we need to address, which is whether or not these should be public hearings, and I believe that they should. Yeah, with the appropriate noticing.
And just so that we're clear, when you say public hearing, you don't mean a technical, legal public hearing. You mean make sure there's enough public notice, so more than just a posting of an agenda. That's what we're understanding.
Correct. What we reasonably and customarily do. Yep. Okay, is there any discussion now, or would we like to hear public comment for a little bit first? Okay. Who'd like to be first? And realize that what we're talking about this evening is strictly the component of the commercial, which would be the consolidation of commercial zones in some form, and the timeline that we're discussing, we're not going on to residential or industrial tonight.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Long Poak. I was, had some information that was more general in nature to the fact that you were looking at a whole new schedule. And in light of that, the last meeting that you had, I set up, and I had suggested that because the general plan update, and the general plan is a dynamic document, that as the new information comes forward, that that information should be incorporated. I tried to send everybody, I think, four documents of purely informational resource. One was the 203 general plan guidelines. The second item, and I didn't print that tonight because it was like 200 and something pages, so I didn't, I emailed that to everybody. The other item was some of the most recent census data that I'll go ahead and hand to the city clerk here. The other item I, I believe I sent was a recent study demographic and economic trends and how they impact Main Street. And it was basically a study on demographics, and I thought that that would be useful when you're going forward with whatever changes you decide to make. And then I was going to quote from an article that I read through the Federal Reserve titled "Local Roles in Cultivating a Small Business and Entrepreneurial Culture." But unfortunately, I didn't see until just now that it says draft. Do not cite without author's permission. So I won't cite it, but I'll pass it, and I believe I sent it to everybody to also read it. But I believe that this has very important information that wasn't readily available at the start of the general plan update, and it might be useful in your decisions that you make going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Come on, you guys, don't be bashful.
My name is Richard Clark, and I own the property at 133 North E., which is presently zoned as a commercial zone. That zone or that location has had residential homes for approximately 60 years, and it is currently zoned as a, as a commercial zone. And some few years ago, I'm giving this story that had happened to me so that it may not happen to somebody else, so I'm just relaying this for people that might be subjected to what I was subjected to some few years ago. The property sat vacant for more than six months while I was doing some painting, and my plate was full with some other things at the time, and the electricity was turned off by the city without my request, that I might be aware that I was not in compliance or that the property was not in compliance and that it was used as a residential use and had been vacant for more than six months. And so I found that out when I went to the city to find out why my electricity had been turned off. And I made an appeal to the Planning Commission that they would allow my continued use as a residential use in that commercial zone, and they found in my favor and allowed that use to continue. The electricity was restored, and I was allowed to continue that residential use, which I have today. I would recommend that the city give greater consideration to existing buildings that are in zones that have been rezoned in a manner that was not designed for that original use, as my residential building was. And that the city consider some other method other than using the utility system as a method or means of enforcement. So I'm just giving you that story so that as, this is a timely situation where you're talking about a new general plan and the enforcement and policies that in the future we don't have that type of a problem that I had in my particular zone. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is William Nolan. I am a Long Poak resident, and I own the property at 524 West Ocean. It's automobile sales. I also have owned the property for over 10 years at Laurel and H. It's auto sales. My son runs that. And I'm real uncomfortable doing this for the first time for me, but anyway...
Take your time. It's...
I don't know for sure that I want to make, I made some notes here, and I don't know, I don't know for sure that I want to, to make this big of an investment in these times, but I would like to explore my options. Most of the allowed uses for this property are nothing that I would support the cost of the value of it, except for what I'm using it for, the auto sales. And the uses, most of them are already available at Walmart or, like Home Depot. There's some of the uses, I don't know if you guys want to, if you want to pass that down, anybody wants to look at it, but their uses are like an antique, and there's a lot of empty stores in this town now, but it could be used for an apparel shop, appliance store, an art studio, art supply store, a beauty shop, or a bookstore. I don't know how many bookstores are really, dressmaking shop, drugstore. Like I said, most of these things are already pretty much available here in town, or a gift shop, or hardware store. You can't open a hardware store in this town. In fact, one just closed, hobby shop. So anyway, to buy a piece of property, which I have bought, and... So anyway, to buy a piece of property, which I have bought, and, or make a pet shop out of it, or photographic supply stores, I think most of these things you could just strike off and you're never going to see anybody, especially with all the empty places up and down the street now. But most of these are loud uses or nothing that would support the cost of the value of this property are already available at Walmart or the Home Depot. And that I could, anybody could open something like that and compete with them. The one subject, the one use subject to obtaining a conditional, with obtaining a conditional use permit would be tie-in with automobile service station. That is allowed. And that, you couldn't put a service station in there, but I'm an old guy now and we have gas stations now. And a lot, in the older days, the service stations did other work other than just selling gas. I mean, a lot of you guys must know they did a lot of stuff. I mean, and at one time, service stations meant besides gas, you got service to keep your car running. Most of every neighborhood had one. There's no way a gas station could go on that property now. But my business, like many businesses, rely on sales and service. I would like to consider putting up a building that would allow me to store and display a few collector cars that I have an interest in and also be able to service cars sold at the existing location to support my business and be successful by taking care of my customers. Because if we sell the stuff, you like to be able to take care of your customer after the sale. Planning told me I can't do this, but at the same time, they told me to submit fifteen copies of a planned building for various departments to look at. And I thought, what difference does the specs on a building make? And it does cost, they didn't say, you know, a complete plan, but specs. And I thought, it costs money to have those made up. And if you're not going to be able to have the zoning, why do I need to do fifteen copies or something that I might not be able to do? Anyway, this endeavor will provide building permits, dollars, more property tax, possibly a couple of jobs for someone, a nice new building to add to the old neighborhood. And I don't know how long I'll be doing this, but my son will probably be doing it after. I feel I'm a good, pretty good salesman. My son was, was working at a Ford dealership on the island of Kauai. And I got him to come off of the island of Kauai to come to Lompoc. And that was, I flew in, I'll get off this, give some hell some time. I flew up here over thirty years ago on a fly-in, just because it would happen to be something that was available. And really liked the town, always had it in the back of my mind. And I have gotten involved at the airport also and really liked the town. Bobby's here and he'll be here, I think, for a long time. So I'd like you guys to consider this. I don't know what kind of a time process it would be, but I think. I just don't understand why I can't do it now. The place is, it's been auto sales for over twenty years. And not to be able to tie the other part in with it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And I'm not going, the old cliche about fighting City Hall, I'm not going to do it because I just don't have the time or the left to, whatever I put up, I'm probably not going to get the full value out of it anyway because I'm seventy-four years old. And so how long is, the building's probably going to last a lot longer than me, but.
Okay, got to get you to wrap up.
I'd like to be able to consider it. So thank you.
Thank you. Just for reference, Mr. Nolan's property is in the community convenience center zone.
My name is Roger Morris. I own the property at the corner of G. and Ocean, Plum Perfect Plumbing. And when we, when we bought the property, well, we approached the city to see if putting a plumbing business in that particular location was going to be something that would work with the city. And they said yes, so we bought the property. And it took some months to get things cleared through the real estate and all that. So we did that. And then tried to make it look like something besides a gas station that it was and still is. And so we approached the city numerous times and kept getting shot down with plans to make it look like something better than a gas station. And so it was just very frustrating to try to deal with that. So we asked for someone to work with us to get a plan that would work. And we, that was never, that never came through. So dealing with the, what the city adopted, the Old Town Architectural Review, we found impossible to make that old gas station look like anything. And the mayor at that time, Mr. Dick Dewey, said, well, asked the city for some financing. So we did. And the city, basically, the finance director at the time, he says, well, they've never loaned anything over seventeen thousand dollars, and we were looking for three hundred and fifty thousand to tear that building down and build a new one. And of course, that didn't go anywhere. But the whole thing was, we had plans that we could afford and make the building look what we thought was nice, but it didn't fit exactly what they wanted to see for the Old Town for architecture. So we never did anything. And then after numerous denials, we finally found out that if all we did was just leave the building alone, we could open the doors, which is what we did. And we had to do underground electric, which was an expense that we just had to, had to do. Because we're the only building on the block, or in fact, within several blocks that has underground electric. But that's all right. But my, the whole point is, if you really want to stimulate business activity in what we call the Old Town District, I would suggest get rid of the architectural review requirements or severely modify them to apply to new buildings only. And some of the existing buildings, I would pay close attention to the people that are putting their money up and let them have a major say in how they want to spend their money and make this Old Town area look good. I know for us, we, our business is very good. The building still looks like a gas station, and that's what it is. The problem was, we spent so much money trying to deal with the city and come up with alternatives that the city would accept, that now we have no money to remodel the building. And I'm old and I don't, I don't want to take on the battle anymore. So that's what the architectural review for Old Town did in my case. And of course, mine's a tiny little case, but like many people have said, ours is a key piece of property in Old Town. And okay, so it is. It looks like a gas station, but we've tried to do our best. Thank you for letting me speak.
I love your paint job, Roger. And your bathtub.
Sean Brewer, I'm the president of Pacific Coast RV. I want to thank the mayor and city council for supporting us moving here to Lompoc. We wanted to expand towards Santa Barbara, and Lompoc was the right fit for us. You know, a lot, a lot of people wondered how we ended up opening up here, but so far, it's worked out really, really well for us. It's worked out well enough where we signed a ten-year lease to extend. And I'm actually a resident of Lompoc now. Basically, for us, when we came here, we were looking to do sales in service of new motorhomes. We wanted to make sure that, that our franchises allowed us to come this way. The entire Santa Barbara County was open for us. So the things that I looked at, moving the business this way, number one is overhead because of the economy that we're in. So looking at the overhead as long, along with the facilities, and I felt like Lompoc was a perfect fit. Once we located a facility, we looked into how difficult it was for us to move in. We were also looking at Santa Maria, the facilities that were available for us. We didn't feel like worked out as well as the one here did. And it was a very smooth transition for us. And I think our business is definitely a good contributing business as far as, as tax revenue. And it's good that businesses are open. If more businesses come to town, the right type of businesses, I think it's good for, for everybody. I just wanted to come talk about how I felt like, you know, things have just worked out for the best, the best way for, for everybody when we, when we came here. Sorry, I get kind of nervous when I talk in front of a lot of people. So I'm good when I'm sitting down, but when I'm standing up, I get kind of nervous. But anyways, it, it worked out. I felt like the facility was good and because there were no zoning requirements. I do have a business, I can't say the name, but it, it's North County. And I'm having a little bit of issues there with zoning and CUPs and different things.
Another city?
Yeah, I don't know how long that business is going to remain open because business is stressful enough once you're in business, dealing with what you have to deal with. But it was a great transition and I thank the community support, the council support. It, it's a good fit and, you know, things are, things are definitely working out. So that's, that's what I came here to say. Thank you.
Sean, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So.
Running off the podium, sorry about that.
No, no problem. It's your, and I didn't quite get it, so I just want to make sure. Your other, the other place you're talking about, you had to get a conditional use permit versus here where you didn't have to? Is that, is that the difference?
Yeah, we, I was on five acres in, in North County, and we flooded from the ocean. So we actually moved properties next door, but because it was a restaurant, we had to get a conditional use permit. And, you know, it was a one-year use permit, and there was different requirements that were put on the landowner and requirements as of yet haven't, haven't come to, to happen. So it's stressful for me, being the, you know, owner-operator there as to what, what the day-to-day is going to be like, you know? So, and I, you know, for, for me, I know the way they did it because there was a lapse in type of business. I guess that's why a CUP came about. But, you know, I, I think that, you know, something like what you guys are talking about, I think it would be better for, for all businesses, you know, as far as zoning and stuff. Because it definitely, I mean, that's a, you know, that's a, that's a big thought. I mean, when I came here before I signed a ten-year lease, obviously, I did a little bit of homework and I met with people and I wanted to make sure it was right. And because it was such a perfect fit, I felt comfortable moving ahead, you know? And I think any type of business, whether it's RVs or what I think, I think if you take care of the customer and people are happy, I feel like people are willing to drive for it, especially our type of business. People will drive two hours to buy a motorhome. And I think it's that way with restaurants, too. I mean, I'll drive an hour to eat. I think, you know, if, if it's less stressful and less complicated for businesses, I definitely think they'll want to be here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Suzie Elend. I'm with Prudential California Realty. So I'm a Realtor in Santa Barbara County. Recently, for the past fourteen months, I've represented my client, Montecito Bank and Trust, on one of the seventy-five buildings that's in that transition between commercial and residential. I took possession of their building, which had gone through a foreclosure process. I took possession in December of 2010 and immediately proceeded to comply with removing abandoned vehicles, abandoned furniture, trash, worked with the city to clean up graffiti, took care of the maintenance on the building, hauled away trash, worked with local charities and churches to donate furniture, and spent quite a bit of time just getting the building cleaned up so we could actually market that building and sell it. So in January of 2011, which was just over a year ago, put the building on the market, worked with three local businessmen, all three from Lompoc. Worked with my client, we accepted the highest and best offer. We, we felt that this client was the best fit for that commercial building, negotiated with that client, a very good offer. We all thought that was a good value, good offer. Put the building into escrow with First American Title. Proceeded through our first couple of weeks of contingencies. Once we received the preliminary title report in our escrow, we were informed that we had to close our escrow because the building was no longer zoned commercial. All of a sudden, the building was a residence. And I said, wait, how could this be? There are no bedrooms, there's one bathroom, there are no windows in the back rooms, and it's not a residence. The building is a commercial building, always has been a commercial building. So we canceled our escrow and I had a little bit of a struggle trying to turn on the utilities as the other gentleman did. I was told they couldn't be turned on because the building had been abandoned through the foreclosure process. So it took multiple inspections for me and multiple appointments with city officials to get the utilities finally turned on, which was a good thing. So we could do our inspections, use the facilities, run the water, and continue to keep the building cleaned and maintained. We were receiving notices from the city that the yard was overgrown and it, it wasn't being maintained, but we had no water to actually irrigate the yard. So finally, we resolved that issue, started maintaining the building. So for ten months, I was out here frequently. We kept the trash hauled away, we kept the mattresses hauled away. I worked with the neighboring buildings to secure the building. And throughout that process, I worked with my client, Montecito Bank and Trust, and a land use planner out of Santa Maria to try and figure out how to defeat this involuntary zoning that had changed the, the course of our escrow. Anyway, to make a long story short, finally, in January of this year, so a year later, we received a conditional use permit. And based on that permit, that CUP, we were able to finally close our escrow. So the happy ending is that we now have a building that can be used as another local real estate office. And it was sold to Mr. Hinkins. He's quite pleased to be finally moving in there. It'll be a property management and real estate office that's at 200 East College. It's in a great location for his use. And we were grateful to the Planning Commission for approving that CUP so we could finally take an abandoned building on a very busy, high-profile corner and put a very reputable business in there. So that's, that's a happy ending, and we're all pleased and grateful that that CUP was finally issued. The zoning remains unresolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Annalena Van Dyke. I'm a resident, I'm also a Realtor with Prudential California Realty. I wanted to just note that Chapter Three of the General Plan Guidelines state that the general plan should be a dynamic document. It is based on a snapshot of community values, politics, and conditions at a particular moment in time, i.e. upon plan adoption. Since these factors are always in flux, local governments should continually monitor the relevance of their plans to ensure that they remain in touch with their evolving communities. Each city and county should establish formal procedures for regularly monitoring the effectiveness of its general plan. When a monitoring program reveals a plan inadequacy, the city or county should amend or, if necessary, totally revise the general plan to bring it up to date. With that being said, the 1997 general plan is out of touch with today's community needs. Thank you kindly for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Next, please.
Teddy Grossini, resident, resident of Lompoc. I just finished a big battle of the zoning deal, going from one, what it's for, to another change of use of a building. And I occupy the 110 and 118 properties of West Ocean, store's called Sweet Repeats. And years ago, it used to be Moore's, which was mercantile. And when the gym was in there, it was Assembly. And downgrading it, I was understood that there wasn't going to be no issues or nothing. And then pretty much gave the city and everything on my little piece of paper what I was going to do in there. And, and they said, go ahead. I had some rough plans that were not done by an architect stamped and proceeded to start filling the store with my vendors. I had forty-nine vendors occupied, ten thousand square feet. And then a couple of days after that, we had another person come in there and red-tag us. And so it was kind of stressful for me, you know? It was like, see, you got to get this done by an architect. So then we jumped through the hoops and called the architect who could get it done as quick as possible because we were trying to get open up for Black Friday, you know, that holiday weekend. So the architect did a real good job and got everything done and presented it back to the city. And they finally gave us the go-ahead to, to open up. And business has been good, but it just was kind of, I thought it wasn't, I don't know, why couldn't something be what it was originally? And then even though that the use has changed, I mean, everybody in, in here knows that that was Moore's apartment store, you know? And the architect was not a very cheap cost to get it done, but we fought through and got it and paid the guy and all going, and we're opened up, doing great. We're pulling people from Orange County. Last weekend, we had someone here from San Juan Capistrano who seen our store on a blog spot because I got four vendors that are bloggers in there, and that's worldwide. So we're, I mean, we're. So we're, I mean, we're definitely pulling people in Old Town. And right now, I have 30-some more people on a waiting list to get in, in either side of the store. And I'm currently working with the property owner to try to negotiate, to take on another building on Old Downtown, to bring some more, you know, vendors in there. And, I mean, it's doing good. I mean, you drive by on Sundays, Saturdays, any day of the week, and you'll see the south side of Ocean Street packed with cars every day, you know? So, and we got the best-looking Christmas windows in the town during Christmas season, but I forgot, I didn't know you had to enter yourself. So, but, because I knew I would have wanted hand downs with all those aluminum Christmas trees, because everybody wanted to buy them. So, and that's my personal collection. But I really think that if the city would just kind of lighten up on people that do want to put their neck out on the line during these economic times to open up a business, you know, be flexible. Because I mean, I'm an entrepreneur success story. I started from the swap meet right over there, seven years ago. Gave up a job as a union heavy equipment operator because I'm more successful as doing what I'm doing now, you know? And it was, believe me, it was scary to give up a guaranteed 40 hours a week and not knowing what I was going to do. But I'm sure glad I did it, because it's been doing real well. So I want to thank everybody who helped me on that project, and the city staff, because I know there were some people that were pulling for me. And we plan on being on West Ocean for a long time, so I'll see you guys later.
Thanks, Teddy. Next, please.
Mayor, City Council, Will Skyler, live in Lompoc. I really have basically a question. I noticed at your last meeting and on the front page of the paper today that mixed use seems to be an unacceptable term or something. And since I have mixed-use properties, I'd like to know where you're going to put those, so I know when to come up and speak on it. I don't know if it's commercial or residential, or what was the other clash you had?
Actually, you're here at the right time and the right place, because the contemplation that I proposed to the council is that the mixed use would revert to C2 as it was before, or something similar to that.
Okay, well, that's my problem. Back in 1962 and '63, when they did the first real general plan, when they realized that the airbase was really going to mount to something and they really should start planning for the town, because it wasn't going to grow 1% or 2%, as it had for many, many years. They were going to have an explosion of property. And they took seven blocks in Lompoc and made it commercial office. This was for nurseries, doctors' offices, and stuff like that. Today, only one block of that has developed, is what you could really call "commercial office." And so when I had the pleasure of serving the people of Lompoc on the City Council, I came up with mixed use, because it seemed to fit a lot of those places. They had residential, they had apartments. My own block, I have a chiropractor, a cat house, a social club, a residential, a three-bedroom apartment.
Will, you're going to have to come back and recover "cat house."
Well, yeah, so, but my point is...
There are people at home who don't know what you said, so you need to clarify that.
Well, usually the corner, I say "the massage parlor," but tonight I said it was the chiropractor. And of course, we have the Lompoc famous tortilla factory, so...
Okay, Mr. Skyler is referring to the Viva Animal Shelter.
I don't know what it would, anyway. My really question is, if you're not going to pursue mixed use and come up with a new classification, what is that classification going to be? And that's my question to you tonight. Thank you.
Okay, as we sit here chatting, what I have submitted to the council is something akin to C2 with the option of having a residential component. And next, please.
Hi, I'm Debbie McComb. I'm here in multifaceted, I guess. I am one of the newest members of the Economic Development Committee, a general contractor, and also a Realtor with Prudential California Realty. And I'm, I have been around the block a little bit, dealing with general plans, specific plans. And the one thing I'd like everyone to remember in a general plan is "general." It's a general plan of dreams, goals, for your community. A specific plan is specific. The people here that have property, that are dealing with all these issues, we have to think out of the box. For us, as an Economic Development Committee, as a city, as a community, if we don't think out of the box, our city is going to follow in the footsteps of other cities that just barely hang on. We have to be entrepreneurs in our city, as well as in our lives. We have to allow for people to have dreams and goals. And I believe that on these properties, I'm not specific with every one of them, we should think about developing some type of a flex use so that if it had an existing use from 1960 and it worked, it should be considered. If it has a use in the dream of the general plan, it also should be considered. It shouldn't take mass amounts of thousands of dollars to get it decided on. And if you come into town and you have this great building and a grand idea, then there should be a streamlined process to help these people come here. Dirk, oh, excuse me, councilman Starbucks, has the "I like Lompoc." And I've been here since 1962, when I was six months old. And the one thing over the years that everybody has always said about Lompoc is "we are a friendly town." They will come here and travel here. We may not be grand and big with all of these fine things that some of them expect when they get here, but when they leave, they always say "we're friendly." We need to be friendly to our community, to our businesses, and we need to respect the wishes of some of the people that are asking you to be considerate with them and streamline them so that they can thrive in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, you guys, you know, we don't get to clap, except for nonprofits and puppy dogs.
Ray Leslie, Lompoc. I have a business at 208-210 Ocean Avenue. I guess I didn't come here at the right time of year. When I come to town, and everything was going pretty well, till I tried to open a business. And it didn't go very well. I probably had more obstacles, changes, ridiculed. I mean, you couldn't even name it enough. Some of the people that were in office here at the time and doing businesses, planners and stuff, they run me through the wringer. Didn't have a very good chance to even get going. I never did get my permit to be in business. They finally brought it to me after a year and a half and threw it on my counter and said, "A new guy came in and found it there." It was terrible. And with the new council we have and everybody going right now is probably the best chance we have to really take care of a lot of this. I really have a lot of faith in everybody that's in office right now and I'm hoping we can kind of change things. When somebody wants to go into business, it should be a no-brainer, it should be easy. It should be something that we're proud of, that somebody wants to go into business in this town. Try and help them get through the process and do what they want, as long as it complies and it is within a zoning. It should be easy. I could do nuclear experiments in one of the rooms down there. There's five eights on both sides, double-walled. It's amazing what they made me go through. And the monies, you know, it's not easy, you know? When you're first going into business, the monies you spend, the months that you're trying to do this, and it was difficult. We did it. And we've been there for 19 years. In business, anyway, in town. So I think the better we can do for making it easy for somebody to come into town that wants to open a business, somebody in town that wants to start a business, if we could work with them and try and do something that makes their life easy, instead of difficult, to save them money instead of spending more money. It's already expensive enough to go into business. And I just don't understand at all. It's not a metropolis that we can't just walk out and look at a piece of property. We're right here in town, you know? It's, it could be evaluated very easy, I think, you know? With staff and everybody can go out and look at the building, you know? Does it fit? Does a business fit? Tell them yes, no, it's easy. And I think we should work for something in that order to try and make business-friendly. People come to town and want to go into business here. And in my business, I have a lot of people that travel through here and unfortunately, there's a lot of them that said they wouldn't even start with all of the rumors that go around town. They wouldn't even think of coming here to open a business. And that's pretty bad. But again, I think we have a good chance with everybody that's in office here now and everybody's doing, I think, a good job, to bring it back, make Lompoc a friendly place and a good place to open a business. And take care of the people, take care of us. We'll take care of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Good evening. Tony Ostini, Lompoc resident. Born and raised in Lompoc Valley, and proud of it. I've been here through the good times and now the really trying times. And what I'm seeing and hearing from everyone is pretty much united. I feel like, over the last 10 years, maybe even longer, it's been going on a spiral downhill. You take and put a little spot in the middle of Lompoc and take a string 20 miles radius. Why are the communities around us thriving? Orchid is booming with restaurants. Buellton has taken on projects that we haven't gotten through. I know this isn't anything new, but it's tough for new business, it's tough on businessmen. They pay the rent, they pay the taxes. I think we just need to be open-armed. I think that's been an ongoing comment throughout the whole audience here. Just to be able to open our arms, sit down, give people a chance to sit down and say, "Hey, this is what I want to do, and let's see what we can do at the table to bring business here." There's been numerous businessmen here. I know that they have bought, they've come to the city first, prior to the purchase, and only to find out when they actually purchased, closed the escrow, were now unable to do everything that they really wanted to do. And we're kind of stifling the dream that Debbie was talking about, and I think everybody else has been as well. So we just want to encourage, open arms, openness. Let's sit down and talk before we close the door and run them off. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
My name is Tom Hinkins. I'm on the other end of Suzie Eland's sale of the building at 200 East College. And I'd like to say that what seemed to be a pretty common sense approach took quite a while to get the transaction to close. The building was a commercial building. It was born a commercial building. And it all fit the guidelines of a commercial building. Unfortunately, some of the rules got in the way and it took quite a while for all that to come together. And I'm really excited to know that it did come together and I'm fortunate that it did. But as a result of this, I haven't spent a ton of money yet, but all the money that I have spent is all local. We use local title, local escrow, we've got local landscapers, local electricians and local roofers, local painters. All that money is still here in the Lompoc Valley. And I like to think that I'm just a small part of a larger ripple effect. And if what I did here in Lompoc can be duplicated time and time again with common sense approach to zoning, I think we could come out of this mess. So I'd like to say thank you for the people that helped me.
Thank you.
Arlen Segres, native. Gee, we're talking about Old Town Downtown Lompoc. You know, if we really looked at it, you had a little bit of everything. In the 100 block of North I, you had two tractor dealers at one time. Dominguez had a line and the Hoke family had one there in the Old Elks Building, International. You had a dairy down there that actually took the milk from the farmer and pasteurized it or whatever and did that. All over the downtown area, you had small businesses going. And I doubt if any of them had to go before any planning commission or anybody else. They just did it. And it seemed to work out great. The plumbing shop down there was a Texaco station. Across the street was a Chevron station. On the other corner was a Shell station. His plumbing shop looks a lot better than those stations did in those days, but anyway. And I know he went through a bunch. I went through the same thing down there in coming before the city. And what they read off to me, a list of things that could be done in the building, an ex-service station like the plumbing shop there. You know what my answer was? It's my fault that my ancestors didn't realize that Arlen was going to be putting windshields in and working on cars. What is the difference between an old service station changing over into an automotive glass place? Absolutely nothing. Only thing is, we're not making that smelly gas out. Now, the next thing that happened on that corner, the last time the general plan come before the deal, I got a phone call late in the afternoon from a councilman by the name of Mr. Skyler. He says, "Arlen, you need to be there. They're about to change you down there. Medium-density housing, like the group of housing that were going to be built behind." The general plan people were going to do this to me. And the answer was, "Well, we didn't think you were going to be there much longer." Well, I can't very well pick it up and take it with me. Still own the property, still do some business down there. But the point there is, if they change my zoning to match the housing behind and they built the housing, guess who has to protect the property? I have to build the wall. And that's kind of foolish, because I didn't force the change in the zoning. People are going to build the housing for changing it. But that's the kind of thing that goes on and we really need to get the little guy going a little stronger in the community. There's several very successful body shops in this town that started out in the wrong zoning. How they got away with it, I don't know. But one of them now has a storage facility, his body shop. The other one has changed hands, but it's down where Main Line was. He got hold of that building that, I think it was aerospace people were in there when he bought it. God only knows, he put a small fortune in that thing. But here's the two leading body shops in town right now, Skyler's and the other one, because he had the go-ahead to do it. So we need to get behind these little small places and do things. And, you know, here a while back, you had this new thing that was going to happen. We were going to allow people to live in the same house and have the business in the front of the lot or something like that. That's been going on for Lompoc forever. When I was a kid in high school and 200 block of North G Street there, there was a gentleman that had a repair shop in his garage. He overhauled starters, generators, battery chargers, you name it. Everybody sent them to him, all the businesses in town. And then you had Pop Ruth down there with his museum right next door to his house. So we've had a lot of those things going on. In the 100 block of South H Street, where Balaam's Real Estate Office was at, on a 25-foot lot, you had a little tiny dress shop in there for little girls. And upstairs, there was a family that lived there. One bathroom, tub, toilet, and sink downstairs. All three tenants used it. It's things like that that made Lompoc in the first place. Nowadays, you'd want them to build a brand-new building for that and the first thing you know the guy's out of business, because he can't afford that jacked-up rent. It's just too much. So if you're going to have these little people start out and get things going like Mr. Gossini there, you need to get behind him and let him grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Good evening. I hadn't intended on speaking, however, I would have, do have something to say. My name is Dolly Hudson. I'm also a Lompoc native, as were my parents and my family here. I own property at 111 North F Street. And it is commercial property. However, I live in the house and own a beauty salon there. I started operating in 1995 as Rapunzel Salon and went through all the ropes that I needed to do. I went through the city ordinance as far as the sign ordinance and realized that Ordinance 100.46 says that as a general rule, no more than three colors can be used in a sign. So I went and I changed, came into council. They said the only thing I could do would be, one, be fined; two, take it down or remove the number, because then it was considered advertisement. The other thing, I could go ahead and request the, go through the council and get a vote. So I did that. And as a general rule, the word "general" means in most cases or instances, but not every case. So that's what the dictionary says. I went and have applied jobs for different people. I've upkeeped my building. I've also got a beautification award through the city. And in 2006, I retired the salon name and changed the decor to a different type of a decor, more contemporary. And by the way, it's now called Alakats Salon. And we also do massage, but there's no happy ending. Thank you.
Are you friends with Mr. Skyler? Don't you even start in on that now. I know you.
Can I talk and then go sit down and then come back up and talk again? Dan Olivera, I have a property on 300 Block of West Ocean Avenue. And I actually have, and this was given to me by the previous... And I actually have, and this was given to me by the previous owner, the ordinance number 1461, the Old Town Commercial District zoning. And apologize, I haven't had a chance to fully read it yet, but I do know, because she has it all highlighted, that there's actually, at the bottom of the page, this page, and to right here are the things that we can do with that Leck Roger gas station that I have next door. And the rest is all the things you can't do. So there's about 14 pages of no's and a page, maybe a page and a half of do's. So when you have a building like that, what are you going to do with it? It's a service station. And I don't care what you do with it, it's still going to be a service station. So it's been vacant for a while. I actually just store junk in it. But I want you all to know that there's a lot of these buildings around town. And I think if the business can't do what they want with their building, or at least something to make it look better so they can utilize it, you're going to have a whole town of empty buildings. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. And next, please. Tony, you only get one chance.
I just have, I just have one thing. Tony Ostini, one more thing. I kind of got off on a tangent after hearing everybody and all these local businessmen, their struggles and strides. I kind of wanted to reflect back on, this is real estate related. As we have clients that come into our office and want to purchase property, we always send them down to City Hall to check out the zoning maps, because we don't want to be liable for giving them misinformation. So when they come down here, and we had many of them from 1997, even earlier, go down, check the zoning maps in City Hall prior to your purchase. They come down here, they check the zoning. It was what they wanted, they purchased. All to come to find out that a lot of those zonings have now been changed on them. I just want to know who's going to be accountable for all those purchases that were made with good intentions, and now those zonings have been downzoned. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Okay, and next time, you can't talk at all, because you used two this time.
I'm mayor and city council. I'm here as owner of a real estate office in town, and we have seen firsthand how this has affected certain neighborhoods and values. As you all know, the market has suffered from outside sources. In reaction to the financing industry and the transaction process have greatly changed in the last five years, the disclosure process is much more thorough when necessary to explain legal nonconforming or a property that may, does not match the zoning description. It usually causes a buyer to walk or look for something else. If the buyer does not want to proceed and needs financing, it is particularly impossible to get an underwriter to accept a property that is in that condition. Appraisal guidelines have been changed, and a lot of, a lot more information is required from the appraiser than ever before. There is no way around the fact that, that this will greatly reduce the property value and likely require a cash sale. God forbid that out of, out of the area buyers comes to the counter and looks at the zoning map and purchases a property cash without getting the details of what's going on in our community. We also need to consider the potential damages from property owners and their loss of property rights, usage values that the council decides decisions may cause. We don't want to any negativity from investors who come to put money in our town. We saw, we saw Mayor Lynn at the council meeting realistically look at the problems, that this is causing our commercial and residential areas, and the council agreeing that this is time that we take responsibility and address it in a way that would not continue to erode the property values and rights. We were then informed that it only took a couple of comments at the following meeting to make council re-vote on whether the planning commission should have the freedom to continue this mess. This is, this was not on the agenda, and the public was not there to represent themselves, yet the council decision, decided to re-vote. It is time that the council take a stand for the members, members of the community and stand for their decisions and to see it through, so that we know we will finally, our government will be behind us. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next. Okay, last chance. Going, going, gone. I think I'd like to start out with a discussion of the last sheet that I passed out, which deals with just the, the way we might proceed forward. And see if there are any comments from the council on that. Obviously, we've agreed that we'll use our normal noticing procedure for each of these meetings. And who'd like to be first, behind the water pitcher?
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I wanted to state that the, the first three suggestions you made, the architectural review guidelines, parking ordinance and site ordinance, I agree that those can actually go directly to the planning commission to expedite that process. I'm fine with that for sure. My one concern goes back to the general plan, and I hope that my previous vote wasn't misconstrued. I think we're all on the same page that something needs to be done. It's just the manner in which we complete that task, so I wanted to clarify that. The other struggle I'm having this evening, and I, and I'm hoping will shift a little bit, is I do enjoy hearing these stories, because this is the basis for my information, to know really what the issues are that I need to address. The one thing I'm not hearing as much is maybe some innovative solutions. So I know that that's difficult, and that's part of my job, and that's part of staff's job. But throughout the process, I would suggest that if you think zoning should be changed, tell me how or why, and give me specific examples. I say that because when working with state government, the more that I gave them, the more likely they were to change their decision that way. So I just, just a suggestion for the future. Now, back to the council sequence of work. The one thing that I'm concerned about is that, the general plan issue. I agree, commercial zoning is the first and probably largest issue that we're going to tackle. But would you be comfortable in shifting the rest after that, in regards to how to address the general plan? Or do you think it should be, continue to be segmented that way thereafter?
I think this works the best, because each of these issues, and you notice that I've changed it a little bit after talking with the staff and some suggestions they had. For instance, number seven is a consolidation of, of a bunch of things, and then number eight is also. And I tried to reduce the number of individual categories after talking with the staff, and you know, part of it was moving the first three items up to the top, so the planning commission could basically start working on those while we were working on this. And then the order was, the most complex thing on here is the consolidation of the commercial sectors. And so that's why that one's first. And then based on discussions with staff, the residential component is the other one that would impact, add addendum to the environmental document. So by getting those two done first, that would get the information that needed to go to the, for the addendum to the environmental document out at, at the very beginning. And just, you know, as a recap, with regard to the residential, only three issues have been brought to my attention. Number one is the lot widths that are required in the zoning ordinances. It currently requires a 75-foot lot width, or you have to get a conditional use permit, and that, that's not what we have in Lompoke largely. And so the suggestion that my planning commissioner made was to just limit the square footage of the lot, which is currently in the code. And then it doesn't matter what the front of the lot is. The second one, and this is kind of a philosophical discussion for down the road, is whether or not you want three-story apartment buildings in the R2 and R3 zone. And nobody really ever thought about that until Home Base on G was built. And then you have to ask yourself whether that was, you know, in hindsight, if that was a good idea. So those are the only, and then the 250 parcels and how that shakes out. Those are the only issues that have been raised so far with me with regard to the residential. And I'm not saying those aren't, that there may not be some other small ones, but there don't seem to be a lot of, of big issues there. And then the industrial is really that philosophical question that I mentioned the other day, which would be, how much landscape and how much parking do we need compared to how much building to, to be most judicious with our land? I mean, we don't want ugly buildings, but maybe, and I don't know what the answer is. But if you looked at the, the industrial and the business park zoning ordinances, they are almost identical. The thing we've been tripping over there is the word production and also tasting rooms. And it just seems that, you know, we always approve the tasting rooms, we always approve the production, so let's make it a permitted use. So we're not running people through that two, three, four-month mill to get a conditional use permit. And then the item number four deals with a couple of the properties that were discussed here, and those were principally properties previously that the prior council either took a commercial property and converted into residential, in the case of College and G, or an industrial property and turned it into residential, and those are kind of scattered all over. Some of them are kind of problematic, because it's one building that was out by itself and the residential grew around it. But some of them are literally across the street from another industrial zone, and then you have to make the decision, well, if it's across the street, is that contiguous? And then finally, number five and six are items that were returned to us by the planning commission. And I think, Lucille, could you correct me? Those were sent without a recommendation, weren't they? I, I don't remember now, I'm sorry.
Two, there was no recommendation on two of the expansion areas, that is correct. To the east and to the west.
So those are just decisions that we need to make, and they don't even have to go back to the planning commission. They're, they're council decisions. And then the last one would be a wrap-up of all the other recommendations the planning commission made, along with a review of the should, shall individually, assuming that's the council's wish. And then we'd be done with it. And in talking about it today, by changing to this kind of format, and there's, you notice there's no dates on here, because some of this is really complex, because of the, the noticing dates, and just, it became obvious in our conversation that we weren't going to have dates for this, but the staff could put dates to it. And they felt comfortable that we could reach this objective by October. And the city attorney, when we were sitting there talking about it, said, "Well, what's the end game? You know, where are you trying to get to?" And so they, they brought another piece in this evening that covers some of it, but doesn't get all the way to the end. And then the, the meeting methodology was really the staff's recommendation. It was different from what I had originally recommended, but I'm fully convinced that it's the, the proper way to move forward and advance the topics with the least amount of confusion, so that we're not backing up and, and involved in do-overs. I think we've got a good plan with all of our heads together. And I know all of us up here want to resolve these issues and, and protect the public health and safety while making it as easy as possible for a business to come here, but no cat houses. Did I get your question? Okay. Who else has a question? Councilmember Starbuck.
I've got a couple of statements. I'm really disappointed to hear that the plumbing shop on, on G and Ocean had to go through the underground electrical, because in 2002, I brought that to the council up here, when I attempted to do an expansion on my business. I went down and looked at the alley. I counted 97 wires, and two of them were mine. Well, I went through council. Council did waive that with a review two years later in 2004 that never happened. So I assumed that it continued to be waived, but I guess not. My other question is the sign ordinance. I sat on a sign committee in 2006 that was completed, and it was turned in. It still hasn't been initiated or done. I feel sorry for you with your place, because that three-color sign is wrong when the city sign at the entrance of town has 35 separate colors on it. Giant College, I'm just very curious, Mr. Hinkins, did you have to purchase that legal nonconforming? My question's to staff here. I'm curious on residential, is the possibility of an overlay, would that do away with the legal nonconforming issue in residential?
That was our suggestion in the, on the south side, that we could craft language that would do that.
What about the north side?
Well, if there were areas that were identified with problems, we would look at those.
Okay, I guess my biggest concern on, on moving with this, this project is, I would like to know what is going to trigger amendments to our environmental impact reports or significant cost. I'm not sure that we can identify what's going to do that in here. Is it going to be the housing element, the traffic circulation element? What is going to be where we're going to make the decision that we're going to spend money, or we're going to have to amend the environmental impact report?
Based on the direction that we received from the council and the planning commission, that will be evaluated to see what changes will need to be made in the land use element, or, well, the land use, circulation and housing elements, and in the specific EIR documents. So until we have that information and direction, we are unable to give you a cost. We will come back to you as soon as we do have that information.
I guess the question is, is there anything that we're going to attempt to do in this phasing right here that could trigger something on EIR?
Yes.
What would it be?
It will, it'll depend on the densities that are actually proposed. The EIR for the document was written with specifics, and there was certain traffic studies that were done based on the way the plan was actually set up. So changes to land use, changes to specific development will trigger some changes. But until we see what the scope of it is, we are unable to give you a dollar amount at this time.
The discussions that we had just with the staff previously, the, in this consolidation that I proposed, there's a, the ability to basically, if we want to, if our goal is to have that compact urban form, and our goal is to provide more flexibility to builders, what I proposed provides the option of someone converting or building a new building and adding residential to it. So as an example, in the proposal, if they had a building on H, Ocean or Central, they would be able to provide residential on the second or third floor. If they were in within the district, but they were off H, Ocean or Central, and most of those properties are in the 100 block of North, South, Eight or whatever, those residential uses, as they are now in the commercial office zone, could be on the ground floor. Okay? So you basically can go either direction now in those properties. And depending on how many of those properties did not have a residential component, when the original EIR was done, that would, would trigger a review. So as an example, if the council chose, excuse me, to amend the general plan document, to convert those properties on the north side and south side that are proposed for downzoning back to their original density, that would basically be 250 additional units that were not in the environmental document that was previously completed. The mixed-use area currently has housing density built into it, but that housing density is below what is generally considered necessary to make that work. The downtown area has a higher housing density that's currently proposed, as an example. And then the overlay that was proposed in the general plan to add mixed-use in effect or housing along H and Ocean doesn't cover all of H and Ocean. So if we here allowed the rest of the property owners to have that option, that would also drive it forward a little bit. Just for reference, this is that document that Nick was referring to. This is the 2003 How to Write a General, General Plan from the State. And one of the things that it talks about in there, particularly with regard to public trans- transportation, is that you have to get enough density to make it work. And 7R1 residential is seven dwelling units per acre, R3 is 21. Lucille, I'm sorry, you mentioned a number for downtown that was, and it didn't stick. Could you mention that again, please?
We are proposing 44, but currently it's at 21.
Okay, and the difference between the 44 and the 21 is what makes it economically viable to do something. And so all of those things would drive this, and by providing the option to do, if you will, mixed-use in the commercial zone as an option, that's going to change the numbers in the environmental impact report and drive the traffic survey a little bit. So any of these changes that we make are going to cause that to happen, and the initial discussion was that that was probably a $60,000 fix to update that. And then the other consideration is that the general plan environmental document that we have now is a little bit dated too, and those things could be caught up. We have the new 20, the new census data that we didn't have when that was completed, and that may have a little effect on it. Remember, I guess, one of the things that it says over and over in this book is that the general plan is a living document, it has to be kept fresh, and so this is a freshening process at the same time. We can solve problems and freshen. Did I get all the points for you? Okay, Councilmember Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank all the members of the public for coming and speaking and letting us know what your views are. I also like to mention that I did get some emails where residents did voice their opinion on the emails regarding this issue. And curiously enough, the emails that I received were individuals that were not very happy with what is being proposed. And I want to make it clear, I think the end goal is the same. I think everybody wants to make the changes and wants to remove the inconsistencies. There is no doubt in my mind that everybody wants to do that, everybody up here, and I don't know of any resident in Lompoc that does not want to remove this inconsistency, because inconsistencies are troublesome. Inconsistencies basically show ambiguity, and we don't know what the rules are. The rules get applied differently to different people, and that's not something that we like to do, and nobody likes to be treated that way. So how do we do that? We've had the conventional way that has been done, which is to work on the general plan update, having the planning commission review this for lengthy times. By the way, having spent a million dollars in a consultant already, we have spent a million dollars already in this general plan update. To this moment, we don't have a general plan update that has removed any of these inconsistencies. It troubles me to see that even up until, what, three months ago, the planning commission was coming to tell us, providing basically and saying, let's review the, you know, here is amended the general plan, and then we're going to move on and solve the real issues, the zoning. And why is that being done, as far as I understand, is because the general plan update needs to get done. There's been a million dollars that have been spent on it. There's been an EIR that has been done. Every EIR is obsolete tomorrow. We've here constant arguments of EIRs being obsolete. We're going to spend the money now, we're going to spend the money later. Every time there is development, there is new EIRs that need to be done. Now what is being proposed here is that we're going to do both at the same time. We're going to solve the zoning issue, and we're going to amend the general plan, you know, in a parallel path. The trouble that I have with the parallel path is that my understanding is that the general plan is general. We are going to take specific cases of zoning problems, and we're going to go and change the general plan to adapt to that zoning problem. And then we're going to go and look at another zoning problem, and we're going to go and change the general plan to fix that zoning problem. So the general plan is going to be changing all the time. What is going to be at the end of the general plan? It's going to be a bunch of little, you know, fixes that have been done because of specific problems. Is that a general plan that shows the vision of what the city is, what we want the city to be? I don't know. I haven't been able to answer that question. I don't know. I think of the general plan as the general vision of what we want to have the city be. It's not a reaction to zoning problems here and zoning problems there. I think we need to have the general vision, and then we go and solve the zoning problems. And that is the path that we were in. Maybe it's been too slow, maybe it cost a million dollars, which it shouldn't have cost a million dollars, and it should have been resolved already, but it hasn't. But do we want to go and change the general vision of the general plan to just resolve the zoning? That's the question. I don't know if that's the right way to do it. I think the zoning has to be changed, I think the commercial zoning has to be simplified, I think the residents that bought properties, and now there is a proposal that their zoning has to be changed, that needs to be corrected. I do agree with all of those statements, there's no question about it. But when and how do we do it? That's where I think the issue is here. And I still have not heard, why is it that we have to do both of them? Why don't we amend the general plan, get that out of the way, and let's get on with solving the zoning? Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, one thing that I think that we need to look at as a council on this is, you know, we're taking a very non-traditional approach to this. Hopefully, it will become an effective approach, but I think that a contingency that we need to look at is, at what point are we going to adopt the general plan and begin the amendment process on this? I mean, I understand that the approval of phase one, if this works, but if we hit something in here that doesn't work for us, what are we willing to do with that? I mean, this is something that we should discuss here. I tell you something that I'm going to be very adamant on, is to parallel the commercial zoning and the zoning ordinance for commercial. It's got to be in line. The general plan, we could pull this out until October, we could do it for a year, but we got to adopt something soon. We've got to start filling stores, we've got to be able to make business grow here.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mayor Ling. And Councilmember Starbuck brought up the point that I think that I was just about to address, and that's that, and I believe, staff, please correct me if I'm wrong, the council sequence of work 2012 as proposed by the mayor through step eight, tentatively would be completed in October. Right, so that's if everything goes perfectly and we hit no road bumps. So that would be, with proper noticing, I think that that's getting pretty tight, and allowing staff the time to do the analysis of the zoning ordinances and such, I think that that's getting tight. So my one suggestion is not trying to beat a dead horse as far as the general plan and the zoning, but maybe I think that there's a point within these eight steps where we can take a concrete step to have completed something, because October is very close to November, which is very close to elections, and I would hate for us to have done all of this work and not actually finalized anything, and then have this happen all over again. So I'm looking, you know, probably after step four, maybe, a good time to look at finalizing some of these steps before we begin five and six, because as we know, five and six are most likely going to be lengthy meetings, possibly more than one meeting are going to be needed for these issues. And then the other suggestion that I would like to make is, you said it yourself, Mayor, that the commercial zoning and commercial general plan issue are probably the largest. So would you be open to a kind of compromise in that we complete step one in your sequence of work as suggested concurrently, and then adopt the general plan, and then go from there with step two, three, and then do an amendment at the end? So I would propose that as a possible solution, and to ensure that the largest chunk that we're dealing with would be completed, and then we can work from there. Thank you.
I don't think that's going to get us to where we need to go because, I mean, if you're concerned about this, step three and four could be pulled together and eliminate one spread there, because most of the properties that are dealt with are industrial and some are commercial, but I think we could get those two steps together if you want to narrow it. I would be concerned about putting five and six together, and realize that those don't need to go through the long series of meetings. They're not going to see steps one through six on the other side. Those are actually just probably a single meeting where we take, number five, six, and seven don't have like the five-meeting scenario, they have a one-meeting scenario, because we're taking the recommendation from the planning commission on five, six, and seven, and making the decisions on each of those as we go forward. So they don't, the first four up here are the ones that have a whole series of meetings because they have to go to us, and then they have to go to the planning commission, then a decision has to be made. And the staff recommended that we, rather than making the final decision on each of these, we just pile them all up and adopt them in one lick. So if the final adoption, if you will...
That was staff's recommendation?
Yeah, that we accumulate all of these pieces and then do a single adoption down at the end, rather than bringing them back. If you remember the original plan, I had them coming back piece by piece, and they said, no, it would be better if we brought them together and then brought the whole package back in one lick for a single approval.
Did they say that at a public meeting, or was that a discussion you had with staff?
That was a discussion at 3:00 this afternoon, we were trying to narrow this down a little bit.
So if I could have staff, sorry to interrupt, Councilmember Martner, if I could have staff comment on that?
Sure.
The context of, excuse me, the context of that discussion was, in looking at the general plan and the need to amend the general plan, we have an existing 1997 general plan. If we were to look at the individual zoning components, our general plan would be inconsistent, where if you wait until, do the review of the zoning, and do the review of the general plan, bring them all back and adopt them at one time, then you do not have an inconsistency. We're still operating at this point under the 1997 general plan, so things will remain in place until the new information is adopted.
I'll get it for you. Councilmember Martner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A comment regarding five, six, and seven, I don't think that's going to be able to go all in one meeting. I do know the annexations are politically charged, and we will have 40, 50 people come and speak. So having five, six, and I know the shalls and the shoulds are also very politically contentious two words. So they will draw a lot of public hearing. So I certainly don't see how on earth we're going to be able to put five, six, and seven in one meeting, even though the planning commission has given us no recommendation in a couple of them.
Okay, I misspoke. What I meant was that five, six, and seven wouldn't have to go, each of them individually wouldn't have to go through the six-meeting process.
Oh, right, okay, it wouldn't have to go through all the other meeting processes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Okay, but they will probably go into...
They each need to be a meeting, there's no question about it.
Okay, we agree then.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great. The next is the, okay, so then the last statement is regarding the final approval. If I understand what Ms. Breeze is telling us, is that we will make these recommendations, it's going to go through this due process of going back and forth with the planning commission and so forth, having the direction of the council. And then at the very end, we're going to put all of this together and do a final vote where the general plan update will be adopted? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the zoning ordinance update, same time.
And I want to make a couple of comments regarding the zoning ordinances, and I don't know exactly where it's going to fall here in the process. I am a little troubled that we are relying too much on our legal counsel to write the ordinances. I do believe that ordinances have to be defensible, and that's what an ordinance needs to be in, a court of law has to be defensible, and that's our job here of Mr. Panoni, to make sure that ordinance is defensible. But really, there is a much more important component, in my mind, of an ordinance, and that is what the community wants. The ordinance needs to read what the community wants, whether it be a signed ordinance, whether it be a commercial, you know, whatever it is. And the process by which the community, you know, writes what the ordinance should be is public meetings, is public hearings, is going to the planning commission, talking to the planning commission, having the planning commissioners draft a language, it is the staff. The staff has the technical expertise to write these ordinances. And it's not just the legal counsel here and the mayor, it's much bigger than that. And I'm a little worried, where are we going to make sure that that gets implemented in the process? Where? Where can we make sure that we'll have enough input from the technical component, which is the staff, the planning commission, and the public to say, what do they want in those Can somebody answer that question? Where are we going to do that in this schedule?
Let me talk about what I, the new plan, that after talking with staff today. So we're at step one, and that's basically where we're taking something that I created with the help of others, and we're going to look at it and make some recommendations to the staff. And then we go to step two, which is a notice meeting, where we have a more in-depth discussion with a prepared draft document. And then we go to step three, which is the second notice meeting, and the council discussion, and the document that then moves forward to the planning commission. And then the planning commission has their first notice meeting, which is a review of the draft document for the fine-tuning purpose. So we give them an 80% document, in my thinking, and they turn it into a 100% document. And then if they need a second meeting, which in this first one, I wouldn't be surprised after that, I would think they would probably not need it for some of the other ones because they're a lot smaller in nature. So basically, there are at least four, at least three and probably four opportunities for the public to weigh in on it as we go forward. But the idea here is, rather than saying to the planning commission, hey, write something and send it back to us, and we'll see if we like it, to give them much more explicit instructions about what the council feels, you know, how do we want to approach this so that they're not spinning their wheels? So, go for it.
So before it was like the planning commission came and told us, this is what we want, and we say, yes, we like it, no, we don't. Now we go the other way, we tell the planning commission, this is what we want, and they can tell us, yes, we like it, no, we don't like it. It's kind of, you know...
Yeah, I think what I'm looking for us to say to them is, you know, conceptually, this is the direction we want to go, you know, we're going to say to them, okay, we do want to, you know, if in fact we want to consolidate these ordinances, then we're going to say to them, well, we want to consolidate these ordinances, and here's some of the things that we think will work, okay? And we take it piece by piece and talk about it, and then that's the framework that they work from, because they have more experience, I shouldn't say it that way, I mean, Councilmember Lingel spent a lot of time on the planning commission, so he has experience, and I've been to a lot of meetings.
He's been silent.
Yeah, he's been real quiet. But I think if we give them a good idea of what we're looking for, then we'll all get something back that's the very best document, and all these people out here are going to come back and contribute to it. And at the end of the day, we shouldn't miss very much. And if you noticed, I put the if we missed it on next year... And if you noticed, I put the "if we missed it" on next year just in case we miss something. So we got six months down the road, we look and we go, oops. The one thing that like Joe had us pass a couple of weeks ago where there was a three-word change, well, you know, somewhere way back up in history, three words didn't work out. Well, maybe there's those three words that we'll miss. This is so large, if we got 99%, I'd be really happy just because of it. Councilmember Costa has one question, and then we're going to take a 10-minute break.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. This is a question for staff. On the revised schedule, which was given out this evening, or draft timeline, rather, July 25th is the tentative date that we would then allow the EIR consultant to complete the work. So I just wanted to confirm that it's your belief that the EIR consultant will be able to complete all of their work prior to October for the final decision?
I don't know that at this time until we receive a scope and a timeline. That is why it's identified after each component that we have to go to them and bring that information back to the council.
Right. So again, just wanted to say that there are possibilities that this could go beyond November for that exact reason. I mean, that's one of many things that I presented this evening that may take us past November, and without any final decision having been made, we may just be kicking the can down the road. Just want to point that out. Thank you.
See you in 10. Okay. I figured you guys are getting some questions ready, so...
I'm writing my wife a Valentine's.
Good decision. Who wants to go next?
You going to call on me? Okay.
I yield the gentleman from the hill.
Well, thank you. The gentleman that hasn't spoken yet. Okay, the reason I haven't said anything is, actually, I was enjoying the discussion. Well, number one, I want to thank, well, the public is mostly gone, but I want to thank the public that did speak. As Councilmember Martin said, we appreciate everything that's said, and we really do learn from this. So I enjoyed the discussions that went on there, and I was really enjoying the discussion of my fellow council members. And with the combination of what was discussed in the public, what was discussed here, I'm sitting here and I'm really confident right now, I'm confident that we're going to come to the end result that we all want, that city staff wants, city council wants, and the public wants. And I want to interject with something real quick because the month of November has come up several times, and I wish we could not discuss the month of November. I realize it is an election year, several of us are possibly up for reelection in November, but that should not be even any consideration of you out there, of us up here. Our job is to make sure that we do the job and we do it right, whether we're here in December or January of next year, or November's our last time sitting up here. That should not be even considered in the discussion we have right now. We have to make sure that we do it right. We can't rush through something and risk that we do something wrong. We have to make sure that we take all the steps, do it correctly, and if I'm not sitting here come December or January, I'm confident that another person, maybe is qualified, no, there's going to be another person qualified to do the job. There will still be some of the staff, the staff will still be here, and there'll be someone else. So I'd like to take November out of our discussion. We just have to make sure we do it right. Now, the reason I'm confident that we're going to do it right, and it's interesting, I was talking to Mr. Penoni during the break, and we both sort of came to the same conclusion. If I look at the staff report that I received prior to tonight's meeting and the plan that I received today, they're basically the same plans. And Mr. Penoni is right, we just have to sort of put some dates on this. But the information that was presented to us, what we want to accomplish is pretty much the same with a few modifications. So looking at this, hearing the discussion, I mean, maybe someone wants to even call a question right away because we're going in the right direction. We're going to get it done, we're going to get it done right. I agree with the mayor that we have to make sure that we get the commercial zoning consolidation done, very important. We're in a rush for economic, not a rush, we're trying to emphasize economic development in this community, that's going to be a key factor in there. Residential zoning is also a key factor in economic development. We've heard from a lot of realtors here today, this evening, and it's a factor with their business and it's a factor with the general public, so get those done. I would actually be willing to, if we want to make any changes, I'd be willing to, after step number two possibly, consider accepting phase one of the general plan. The industrial zoning is number three, but if we wanted to accept the general, phase one of the general plan early, that's where I'd try to put it in, or I'd be comfortable going with the entire eight steps. I'm comfortable right now that we're going to get it done, we're going to get it done right. Thank you.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Councilmember Lingle, I'm entirely perplexed by your statement, to be completely honest. And the reason I say that is because I have a chronology here of from 2007 just until today, and it's two pages on what's happened, and quite a few times, items have been repeated, quite a few times there are things here that have already been done that we're going to have to redo. And the reason, again, that things were never finalized were the election years. So unfortunately, it's a reality of our seat that it's something we need to consider. So I don't have confidence the next person sitting in your seat, or possibly your seat, possibly Councilmember Martin's seat, or possibly the Mary Lynn's seat, will agree with what we have been doing over the past, or will be doing, excuse me, in the next 10 months. The second thing is, is you say something about rushing, and that's, again, exactly what I'm opposed to, and that's why I'm saying, my concern is, is that we're rushing to try to get everything done, and I don't know if that's the best decision because when it comes down to it, you're going to be working for the next 10 months rushing to get to that step eight, and you may not get there before November. That's why for me, November is very key. You didn't call a question, is that correct? So I'm going to continue the discussion of what I suggested earlier as a compromise, and only because I understand that it's not, I'm not trying to revisit the issue that already received a 3 to 2 vote, we're moving on, and some of it's going to happen concurrently, I accept that. However, if we could take council's sequence of work, step one, and then adopt the general plan, and then continue with the rest, I think we would have a concrete decision made and everything else could fall into line thereon after. And I would like staff, if possible, to comment on that strategy.
If that is the direction that the council wants to take, we certainly could do that. That would move up the steps five, six and seven. Under item number one, we would then bring the Planning Commission recommendations to the council for consideration, and we would have our existing environmental document in, which we could bring forward with probably a minimal amount of work by the general plan consultant.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So let's look at this critically, okay? Let's try to be as critical and analytical as possible. Councilmember Costa's proposal is we are going to look at the general plan update, the general plan, and the commercial zoning at the same time, and we're going to resolve that issue once and for all, with the hope that we will simplify the process, and that will kick-start our economic development. I believe that's in general statements what the recommendation will be, right? Okay? Simplify the process, Planning Commission, ordinance, you know, let's simplify it, let's make it a commercial zoning as simple as possible so we can get businesses to come into town in a very expeditious manner. We'll tackle the general plan and the zoning at the same time. After that, we'll go and review what the Planning Commission has done already regarding the general plan update. The Planning Commission has done all the background work for phase one of the general plan update, and we will look specifically at the issues that the council has yet to look at in that phase one general plan update, right, which is items five, six and seven, correct? The council will make the vote on those, five, six and seven, and then adopt the general plan that the Planning Commission has been looking at for the last 10 years, right? With $1 million in the process, I have to stick with $1 million. So, and then we'll go into residential zoning review, once the general plan update, phase one, has been amended, we'll move into the resident, well, the Planning Commission or the council will move into the residential zoning and industrial zoning and number four, I guess. I don't see, I mean, I think that's a conservative way to look at this from two points of view. One is that it will assure us that we will get this general plan update amended before, I don't want to call that month, okay? Before that month, all right? So that's something that we need to get done. I really truly believe that we want to get it done before we get potentially three other new people up here, that they want to have their say on what's going to happen, and three new potentially planning commissioners, that they want to have their say in it. So that is a conservative plan that will assure us that we will get there before that month, and I really truly think that we need to get there before that month. The second thing is that I think it would be a good exercise to see whether we could actually master doing the commercial zoning in this new way, which is a non-conformal way, which is we're going to tackle the general plan and we're going to tackle the zoning at the same time, and the council is going to give direction through the Planning Commission, the staff is going to get involved, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So we'll kind of test it out. Did it work? Did it work well? Did it go fast? And if it does, well, great, we'll tackle number two and three with no problem. So I think it's, you know, I think it's a conservative approach, I think it has some, you know, merit from the point of view that it gives us some testing ground, and it does assure us that we will get the general plan updated before that month. So I like it. Now, Mr. Mayor, you may not like it, but you better give us a good reason why not, and I challenge you to give me a good reason why not.
I guess the issue is I don't want to get there and not have it all done. The people who have these 250 residential properties, by my count, went to 11 meetings or had the opportunity to. No, I'm talking in the past, and never got a resolution. It went through the Planning Commission, and it went to the council, and it went back to the Planning Commission, and it came back to the council, and the council voted to amend the general plan map to match the zoning map, and then the next meeting when no one was here, the council reconsidered the vote, and that went back out the window, and then their properties went back into limbo again, and that has gone on since 2005.
We have a new council.
I understand that.
And number three is going to come up right after the general plan update is amended, and you're going to be here, and we're going to be here, and we're going to make sure that those properties are correctly addressed, and that's going to be before that month.
If your concern is the timeframe, and that's what I hear you saying, and the items five, six and seven are items that have to be only considered by the council, and I think there's a reasonably good possibility that each one of them can be resolved in a single meeting, albeit a somewhat long one, then perhaps another alternative that would make both of us happy is to co-mingle them because there are some large, and realize that those items, there's not a lot of staff work to do because the Planning Commission made the recommendations, and maybe we could just integrate them. So for instance, if we, because I share your desire to get it done, don't misunderstand at all. For instance, if we look at the new draft timeline, we have a meeting on March 13th, and then we don't take up the next issue until, oh, hang on, May 8th. So why couldn't we intersperse number five or number six or number seven in that dead zone because it doesn't have a staff document? We're basically going to take what's been presented to the, what's been approved by the Planning Commission is going to come to the council. It's not, you know, a lot of staff work doesn't have to be done, it's a done document. Why don't we intersperse five, six and seven in between one, two and three, and then we'll get it all in a more compact timeframe, we'll have miles of room left over, you'll get what you want. My conscience will be clear because we will have taken care of all these people who've waited for seven years to find out what they could do with their properties, both the industrial owners, and, you know, we've heard from some of the industrial and commercial owners tonight and the impact it's had on their properties. I mean, literally, some of these buildings have sat vacant for six years. I don't know how you'd feel about owning a home you couldn't live in for six years or something you couldn't rent out, but I'd be a lot more excited than some of these people are. So I think maybe we can accomplish both things if we put number five after number one, number six after number two, and number seven after number three, and we use the gaps in the timeframe where staff reports are being created and move forward, then maybe we both get what we want, and we could be done by July.
Mayor...
I'm sorry.
On the same topic?
Okay, go ahead.
But he had his light on first.
I was just going to quick ask a question. Councilmember Martin was requesting that we, after number one, we possibly go to accept phase one. I was saying, why not one and two and then phase one? Mr. Mayor, why would we not want to do one and two and then go to accept phase one? We get both the residential and the commercial.
Well, we have to, we have to do five, six and seven no matter what, and the industrial one is a small pickup, and I just like to be all done with it. I don't want to get to October and not have completed one of the most important things that I set out to do because I've been going to these meetings since 2005, and I'm here to tell you, I know all the sad stories and all the problems and all the people who have struggled with these properties forever.
We would be accomplishing those, though, if we took...
Well, if we pass the general plan, then we're going to have to come back, do a general plan text amendment, amend the general plan map, amend the zoning map after, rather than just doing it all as we go along. If we integrated five, six and seven between the other items, we could easily make the deadline and take care of everybody's issues. That's what I'm saying. I don't know whose light's next. Hopefully, you guys do. Ashley, Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Scheduling wasn't, it was part of my issue, but I think that one thing that you're losing with that is, to concerns, is going to be the noticing, if the, if staff is confident that we would get the proper noticing in that timeframe, and also although the staff reports may already be done, there will be some work that will be needed to get that together. So if they're confident of that, I'm comfortable with that, but... So if they're confident of that, I'm comfortable with that, but that doesn't address my concern, which is that you wouldn't still be adopting the general plan. And understanding that we would have to do an amendment, and I get that in talking with staff, they've told me that that's actually a relatively easy process. And again, because I don't want, you know, I don't want to restate it, but you know what my concern is in regards to not taking a formal action.
I guess what I would say is writing a general plan is simpler than amending it, and we haven't been able to get it done in seven years. So I have no desire to be on this council for another seven years to get the amendment done, and I guess that's why I'm pretty rigid on this and, you know.
You care for amendments?
Yeah. Can you guys, what do you think of the viability of sticking Five between Two and Three, and Six between Three and Four, and then getting Seven snuggled up? Since those are work that's been done by the Planning Commission already.
That's going to be very difficult to meet from the staff perspective. We have recommendations from the Planning Commission, that is true. We do have booklets put together there, staff work and timing as far as noticing. It would require us bringing the general plan consultant in to additional meetings, and it would be a very difficult sequence for staff to meet in that timeline.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'd like to say something regarding this process that we are adopting. It is a process that we have never done before. I think we need to test it, and I think doing Number One, the commercial zoning, would be a good test to see how long does it take us, how complicated it's going to get, how the Planning Commission is going to handle it, what kind of public hearings and public comments and ordinance writings we'll have from our attorney and whoever else. I think we like to go through Ones before we embark in the whole thing. I mean, I guess to me, it's kind of like a, why don't we try it with the commercial zoning and see how successful it is and how expeditious it is to tackle both, the general plan and the zoning at the same time? Let's try it out. I'm totally open it. Let's try it. Let's do the commercial zoning. But at the same time, once we're done with that, and we'll get, we have gained experience to see whether this process works and is good, then we'll move into the residential and all of that. But at the same time, let's get the general plan done with, and amending it, we'll do it later. When, when we tackle the residential and we have to amend the general plan, we'll do it then. You know, I think it's crazy for us to jump into all of them. I understand, Mr. Mayor, the frustration of the members of the public from the point of view that their residences are in limbo. I understand. We can, the best that we can say is we promise that we'll get it solved for you before that month, okay? Whether it's going to be next month or whether it's going to be five months, I think we owe it to test, to test this process that we are going about getting ourselves into. And I think the good test would be to do Number One and then go and amend the general plan update.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Ms. Bruce, you made a statement earlier that if the general plan was adopted earlier, the consultant cost would be lower. Did I interpret that correctly?
The consultant would not have to go back at that point and rewrite anything. If the 2030 plan were adopted following the commercial, we would just have to look at the commercial component because the residential and the industrial would remain as they are. It would not need to be reviewed until a later date when we would go back and do those changes.
So it's like pay now, pay later, then? It's, it's a wash.
And it depends on what the changes are.
Okay. Yeah, I guess my original question at the beginning of the council discussion was, at what point would we adopt the general plan if something is not going right? What is going to be our trigger to say, let's adopt it and start the amendments?
You know, maybe Councilmember Martner had a thought. Maybe we embark on Item One and see how it goes for us, and if it's all going according to plan, then we go to Item Two, and if we're still going according to plan, we go to Item Three and Four, maybe combined. And if it's not going according to plan, then we pull up short and take on Number Five. And then we get it done, and I appreciate the fact that we want to get it done, and I know you appreciate the fact that we want to solve these seven-year-old problems for people. So how about that as an alternative?
I will, in principle, yes. I think we go through Number One, we'll see how we do. We might get bogged down for three months, and then we're going to go, hey, general plan, please come, okay? Let's amend that, okay? I, I don't know what else to tell you, but, you know, the urgency of getting the general plan in place is very high on my, on my book. I think a comment regarding the financials is assuming that we're going to make a lot of changes. We might pay the money later or now, but let's say we may not make any changes, and we may not need all of that consultant if we adopt the general plan beforehand. So, I mean, save your pennies, right? You know, and don't use the money until you really absolutely have to. In that sense, I, I don't see, given what, you know, what the conversation has been and the discussion, I, I feel that is probably the best compromise that we can reach at this point in time.
Councilmember Lingle.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. And I believe we, I believe we have reached a compromise, and I'd like to see if Ms. Martner would like to make a motion right now.
Yeah, let, let, how about, let me have a run at that, just... Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Costa.
I just, general comment. Thank you, Mary Lynn. I agree, we're definitely figuring something out, but I think Councilmember Starbuck made a, a good point. That trigger, will that just be a council consensus when we come to that point where we feel like we need to focus on Items Five through Eight?
Yes.
And then, again, I want to go back and restate, then we'd be asking staff to completely shift the direction that they're going and provide that information, so they may be ready to present a different item, and we're going to have, we're going to have a time lag there when we make that decision, just to put that out there. I mean, is that understood, why that would be?
So perhaps on the staff side, as we go along, you could get Item Number Five ready in case we had to shift gears and go in another direction.
We'll be happy to proceed in looking at that. May I just ask that the council take a quick look at the questions that we asked in the staff report?
Yeah, let me wrap this up, and then we'll go to those questions. So, yes, what I would like to do now is move the Planning Commission initial work, spelled wrong, Item Number One on the sequence of work, and then on the back, the meeting methodology and review of each zone and element that we've agreed to, and look for a second for that.
I would like to amend that motion, if I may, otherwise I want to second it. The, the motion amendment would be that once, once Step Number One comes back to the council for final adoption, the council considers revisiting the general plan update discussion, the amendment of the general plan. You know, I don't want to leave it out there in the open that we're not going to pull the trigger if we have to. I think we need to put a provision in the motion that we will pull the trigger whenever that Point Number One is done, if we have to. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I, I, I think, that was my understanding of our discussion. Yes.
Could we restate this motion?
Phew, boy, now that's going to be harder. Okay, so, Number One, I move that the Planning Commission initial work, still spelled wrong, proceed. Number Two, that we proceed with the commercial zoning consolidation and general plan, commercial land use descriptor, that we follow the steps as outlined on the back of the document, and that we are cognizant through the process of our timeframe, and if we begin to slip out of our timeframe, we will immediately revisit this and solve the issue with the general plan.
I second.
Good. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? Life is good, and that passes five-zero. Thank you all. So I'm going to come around now, and I'm going to pass out...
Mr. Mayor, before you do that, we still need a, a question.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The most important one, right now at least, that I'm hearing, or that I'd like to see an answer to, is the issue of, you know, your handbook has a certain timeframe that staff reports have to be done in order to put public notice out, and so we're wondering if, if we could treat this process that we just described like we did the budget process where we don't have to meet those extended timeframes.
Okay. I would seek, I would seek council consensus to treat this, the staff report timeframes for this as we treated the budget process, and I need to see everybody's head move up and down. Councilmember Costa.
Mary Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong, were there draft versions out earlier than the actual versions? Because there's a lot of information for the public to digest, so providing them the information last minute could be an issue. And us as well, I mean, providing me the information last minute could be an issue. So that's my concern with that. Sorry.
Well, I'm willing to let the staff have the latitude, remembering that everything that is going to be discussed is actually from, from the get-go, is passed out the meeting before, it's even on the agenda, so it's, would be even further back. I'm sorry?
Mary Lynn, I understand that, and that's why I do agree. I like the, the meeting methodology. I think that that's going to help. But the important part for me, not being a planner, is staff analysis, and that's what would come in the staff report. So although you may provide hard information, what I'm looking for is their analysis, and if I'm not provided that in, in a timely enough manner for me to prepare for the meeting, that could provide difficult... I want to give staff the latitude as well, understanding the constraints that they're under. I'm just trying to figure out if anybody else shares my concern. If it's just me, then it's just me.
Councilmember Martner.
No, I, Councilmember Costa, I do share your concern, and with all due respect to the mayor, you know, you bring out cases and this and that. I do want to hear the independent, professional, you know, view on this, and if we don't have those staff reports, I won't be able to make decisions, unfortunately. And, and that's why what a lot of this rushing through this timeline, it's making it difficult.
Okay, let's go back.
Mr. Mayor, can we ask staff what, how many days they'd be comfortable with, rather than the 11 days? They may be comfortable with five days.
I don't know. Go ahead and respond to that, staff, please. There it is.
If we were able to provide the information to the council instead of the 11 days, we do have internal review of that. It really depends on how soon you want to get it up for the public. That's one of the issues that...
Correct. I do want to interject really quickly. My apologies, Mary Lynn. City Attorney, were you discussing that 18-day city attorney? No, excuse me. So you then would just get it at the same time we would for your review? Is that your assumption?
No, I wouldn't get that length of time, but I would get it before it, you sought. So it will, it will add to our screwing around to get things done, but we're trying to see if there's a willingness to not have us have to get all that done on the 11 days before, but something less than that.
What do you recommend?
The week before generally is, we would produce staff reports. What we generally do is that they would be available the week before the staff, or the council meeting.
No later than Friday, or would it be any earlier than that? Or do you use Friday as the standard?
What we usually do is for Planning Commission, they meet on Wednesday, and we give them the report, so they have it seven days before the meeting.
And with regard to council?
If council would, we would give it, your meeting would be on Tuesday, we'd give it to the Tuesday before.
So seven days versus 10.
Yeah, that's fine. That, that's more than fine for me.
Okay, for you, Councilmember. Okay, so you have consensus for that. Okay, now we go to, which, which question was next that we haven't resolved for you?
I think the question on Page Three is not necessary at this point because we're not going to deal with the 1997 general plan, and we will be looking, depending on the amount of work that is necessary, we will be bringing you back a scope of work for the update, if any is necessary. But this revised schedule, we may not need to ask Question Number Two at this, or, Question on Page Four at this time.
And if there's another question that's not on the staff report that you need an answer to, please feel free to ask.
Mary Lynn, there's a final question about the joint professional process to be utilized, where you have the joint meeting between the council and Planning Commission. I saw on that timeline that that occurred multiple times since 2007. Is that something we plan on utilizing?
I don't feel the need for it. I don't think it accomplished a lot in the past, and the whole approach here is for the council to give the Planning Commission some concrete instruction that they can work And it was done in the past repeatedly and didn't seem to bode any success. Is there another question, staff?
Not at this time, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. City Attorney, you have another question?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I, I think I need clarification based on, I assumed that based on your discussion, looking at that question number five, that the process that was, we're going to follow was this process, but then ultimately, the final document that's prepared is prepared by the joint effort of the planning staff, me, and the consultant to put, the actual, put the formal document before you that's going to get adopted. Is that right? So I think, I think we're in agreement on this question.
Yes.
Okay.
You promised, right? You promised?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you think we need to get him to cross his heart, or is it okay? Probably okay, all right. All right. Do we have any other unresolved issues with regard to this? Nope? Okay. So now, let me go to the next handout. unresolved issues with regard to this? Nope? Okay. So now, let me go to the next handout. Yeah, but I don't know who all had one, so it's better to have too many than not enough. Pass it on, and there's plenty of copies for the folks in the audience. There's a slight change in this one based on something someone told me that I worked in from the last meeting. Okay, the first two documents, one labeled general commercial and one labeled neighborhood commercial, are the existing text from the general plan. And if you see a strikeout, that's a strikeout of the existing text in the general plan, and if you see green, that's my addition to the existing text in the general plan. And the reason, again, to have these is that so we can have the general plan document and the zoning document side by side as we're going forward. With regard to general commercial, that would be, assuming you like the name, the commercial success zone general. And with regard to the neighborhood commercial, that would equal commercial success zone neighborhood. And with regard to the general commercial, the only changes are to add a couple of uses that are actually allowed in the zone currently, but were not listed in the general plan, so it was not consistent. And because the zone is now going to extend to a block off H Street and a block off Ocean, the changes are adjacent to high-volume highways, because it will not be, they would not be immediately accessed. And those are the thoughts there. With regard to the neighborhood commercial, it's a more of an effort to spell out, in a general sense, what that neighborhood commercial is used for. And so, that's kind of the half the puzzle. Now, I call your attention to the commercial success zone general, and I think it probably needs to be general commercial success zone, but that was an afterthought. And the philosophical discussion would be whether we do, in fact, wish to combine the various zones that currently exist. Obviously, I'm an advocate for this, but I'm more than willing to talk about each one of them and describe why I think it is, but I'd like to offer everybody a minute just to read the text and get an idea. So, it would be the first paragraph, commercial success zone general.
I have a general question for you, Mary Lynn.
Absolutely.
As stated previously in this meeting, and I don't want to throw a kink into the plan, that we've already gotten started, but I'd just like to restate that this meeting was not publicly noticed as a public hearing. Now, I understand it's not required by law, because it's not a decision that we'll be making, but I just want to make it clear, in your opinion, you're comfortable with presenting new information for discussion to give to staff, even though this was not noticed as a public hearing?
Interesting question. City Attorney?
There's no legal issue with it. It's just against what the norm is, which is that we usually notice these as public hearings, and then we discuss items, whereas this evening, it was not noticed, as usual, and we are still discussing new material. Just wanted to confirm that you were comfortable with that.
I think, since this is so very early in the process, and it's just a very preliminary discussion, yes, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay, for the record, I'm not. Thank you.
For the record, I'm not either, particularly the whole discussion regarding the deletion of all-town commercial. I think it should be publicly noted, and there should be a public notice sent out, because I do know many residents that do have an opinion regarding that, and they did not know that this was being discussed tonight.
I agree.
You know, I'm just trying to go forward, guys. You guys all want to go forward, and then you want to stop. I don't know what to tell you. Okay, well, then I think we're done. Any other closing comments? Okay, seeing none, we are adjourned to...
Oral communication.
You're right. Last oral communication. Anybody have anything they want to say?
Joyce Harrington, Lompoc. I just have a question. It was nice to see you all agree on something, although I'm not really sure what you agreed on. But, will there be a way for us to get a copy of that, so that, like, right now I have stuff on city letterhead, and then I have what John handed out, and I want a piece of paper that I could show somebody and say, this is what's happening. And right now, I don't have that. Are you going to put something together so the public will know what the upcoming schedule is, what we can expect to have discussed at that meeting, whatever it is, in one piece of paper and have it be an official piece? Because if somebody wanted to challenge some of this, would they challenge the city's portion, or John Lynn's portion, or is it the same? I mean, to me, it's confusing, because it's just, it needs to be a little more professional, I think, and something that we could look at with one document. Thank you.
Okay, the procedure we approved this evening was that a draft document distributed by the mayor or staff at the meeting prior to the meeting at which the zoning element would be first discussed. So I've distributed the draft document that I created, and the next meeting, we would be discussing it, which would be the first noticed meeting, which this one didn't turn out to be. Next.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, while I own no commercial property on the zones that are discussed tonight, I do own a piece of Lompoc, several pieces. What I have noticed is, it seems that this council is politically divided into a segment that wants to get this done, and a segment that doesn't want to get this done. I feel this council should improvise, adapt, and overcome these problems, and get this job done. Two of the council members seem to want to adopt the general plan at almost any cost, reasons being, how can we possibly do this? It might cost money. I assure this council that if you do not get this done, I believe in the mayor's plan, frankly. That is my bent on this. I've only met the mayor here, in these meetings, but I feel the man is right in this. I've read this, or part of it. I've seen this before, these changes. These have been passed out here before. This is not new. This is not some new discovery. This has been here before, commercial success zone and stuff like that. I recommend it. It's a good read. You can't keep putting this off and pinching things to slow them down, so that this won't happen. The general plan is not particularly a great, good general plan that needs adoption, but if you can get over whatever it is you must, and run both of these concurrent, as suggested, it could be a good general plan for the benefit of the citizens of this community. Right now, government is not the solution, it's the problem. That's the problem. We've got to move on with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Nicholas Gonzalez. I'd just like to encourage you, as you're going back, zoning is the tool by which you implement the objectives of the general plan, and I believe it's in chapter nine of the 203 guidelines, that it does state that the OPR, the Office of Planning and Research, which is the agency that governs the 203 general plans, suggests that you do them concurrently, but keep in mind not to create additional inconsistencies if you start segmenting the process too much. So, when you're making these changes, make certain that, in fact, you're looking at the whole, even though you're doing them in segments, is to not create an inconsistency that you have to go back and correct. Then you create a circular equation that never stops. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. Councilmember Costa?
Mary Lynn, if I may, I think I interpreted Ms. Harrington's question in a different manner. Will staff be able to provide an official finalized document of the proposed timeline at the next regularly scheduled council meeting? Is that something that can be provided, just for our final approval? It could probably even be in consent calendar?
At the next meeting? I'm sorry. The 21st?
If not then, then the meeting thereafter, just so we do have a finalized timeline that...
The meeting thereafter.
Right. The meeting thereafter is fine, so everybody in the community, including us, can keep referencing back where we are, where the process is going, and, you know, in what order.
So, you would want to see something similar to what we provided you this evening?
In combination with what Mary Lynn proposed this evening, and we adopted, or we decided was a good idea.
Right.
Adopted wasn't the right word, sorry.
We can certainly come back with something at the March meeting.
I think that would be helpful for everybody to just keep updated on that. Thank you. Nothing extensive, just something to reference.
Councilmember Martner.
Thank you. Going along those lines, I think one of the issues that we saw tonight is the fact that because this language that is being proposed here, and the subject that was being proposed here was not duly advertised, if you wish, or duly noted, many members of the public may not have known that this would have come up for discussion. So, to include them in a staff report in a brief way, I think it would get us a long way, to letting the public know exactly this piece of document, with this language proposal, with these word changes, are going to be discussed at that meeting. I think that's extremely important, and I think that's why tonight, we failed to move forward, because, I have to tell you, many people didn't know that we were going to discuss redefining the commercial zoning in all downtown. The mayor may have passed, you know, the information out, and the members that were present here may have been aware of that, but the majority of the public was not, and that is the problem. The majority of the public, we have a public duty to inform the public what we're going to discuss, exactly what we're going to discuss. So, it's not that we're trying to stop the process, we're trying to do it right. Thank you.
Sorry.
Next.
Mary Lynn, is there any way we can add your paperwork that you've passed out as attachments to those staff reports?
I'm sure that can be accomplished.
Yes, we do have the material, and we do add it to our staff report and post it on the website as well.
So, everybody will be more than prepared to discuss this item when it comes back next time. Thank you.
Absolutely. And it won't be Valentine's Day either.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Anything else?
May I just ask one question? I'm sorry.
No problem.
At the meeting then of March 6, we are going to return with a timeline that reflects what was discussed this evening. And at that meeting, the city council is going to provide us with general direction. That's the time when you're going to discuss these handouts and provide us with general direction, that we are then going to come back with, following your discussion, at another meeting.
Correct. We're going to discuss it. We're going to make recommendations to the staff. They're going to come back with a finished document, which we will then review at the next meeting and approve it.
So, on the regular council meeting, there is going to be a public hearing regarding the commercial zoning. Is that what you're saying?
It'll be another special meeting, and it'll deal with this issue.
So, what's coming back on March 6?
The discussion that we didn't get to have tonight.
But I thought that that discussion has to be in a meeting, that there is a public hearing?
That will be a notice public hearing on that day.
So, it will be noticed as a public hearing, and it will come as an agenda item that is a public hearing?
Yes.
That's what I said earlier?
Yes.
At a special meeting, not during the regular council meeting?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm confused.
Okay, so, on March 6, we would just bring back the timeline reflecting the direction we received this evening. Then, on March 13, that would be the meeting that we notice that the council will provide direction regarding the documents that were provided at a special meeting, March 13.
I understand that. I understand that.
All right, thank you.
And my understanding is that you'll have a timeline that shows steps one through eight as they currently exist, and then a fallback plan if things don't work out for us.
So, we'll show two timelines?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just to confirm one last time, our next special meeting will be on March 13.
Yes. Yes. City Attorney, anything else? I know you like Lompoc. We know Dirk was here. Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. Have a good evening.